Hello, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to thank the members of the board of the country club for being here with us tonight. This should be, this is a workshop setting as opposed to a city council meeting, so the rules are, you know, we have some free dialogue here. I would have much preferred that we had a room that would accommodate all of us around a table as opposed to this kind of a setting because I, we invited you to a dialogue, not to testify before the, you know, and so, but because we have a city council meeting and I think you guys have your board meeting, so we were targeting a Tuesday night and afternoon, and so this was really the only room that would really accommodate this. So, so please accept our apologies for the setting. Not apologies, we're kind of like the chambers, but you know what I'm saying, it's not the environment that we were shooting for. So, from my perspective, I think this is a continuation of the dialogue that Mr. Bia and I have been having for a long time with, with Mr. Schaefer and Mr. Jisha. So, I appreciate you being here. I don't think, this should not be a real heavy lift. I think there's a lot of consensus, I hope, on what we're trying to accomplish. So, Carlos, anything before we start? So, one of the goals personally for me, and I can't speak for the other members of the council, but one of the things that we would like to see is, first of all, I'd like to applaud you for the work you have done to provide some financial stability for the club. You've done a lot of things that, that we over the years have suggested that you try to do, and you've done them, and they've been successful. And from, from our perspective, we're very pleased with what, with the things that are going on at the club, and I think you're heading in a great direction. So, one of the things that continues to trouble us is we would like to establish a day of the month when the payment is due for the previous month. And so, we don't even really care what day it is. I mean, if, I don't know how long it takes you to pull your books together and all of that, so, you know, allow yourself enough time, but we would like to see an agreement that, okay, on the fifteenth or the twentieth or the last day of the following month, or whatever that day is, we could get the payments and the financial statements maybe in one packet. And really, that would, doesn't seem like that's a big, heavy lift, but that would make it a whole lot easier for us to, to plan and know where we are with things. And I don't know who wants to speak on your behalf, or if you all want to come up as a group.
We're allowed to speak, really?
Yeah, but the only thing is, you have to come to the podium, and you can, you guys can all come up at the same time, but for the record, the speaker has to make sure that you say your name before you speak, so that in the minutes, it's all clear who's talking. So, welcome.
Thank you. Ken Schaefer, president of Temple Terrace Country Club. I don't know if, I know I've met with the city manager and the mayor for some time now. And obviously, we have board members here, and we have Ken's an honorary board member, Ken Balls. We have Brian McCaffrey, William Dickerson, AKA Mark. We have our GM, Marcy Borg, Jay Jisha, Todd Snapp, Brian McCaffrey. I think we have one more on our way, and that would comprise our board. But obviously, this is, I'm, we're going to have our annual meeting around April 15th. I will be coming off the board, so will Mr. Wees, so we will have other board members. But over the last, I know I've went through this with the mayor and city manager, but it's been a long road to get to where we're at. We raised dues last year. We have some things we're doing at the annual meeting that is very, very likely to produce. I know, I told the mayor and city manager, it was around fifteen, an extra 15,200 a month. That's on current numbers, that's going to be 19,200 a month. So hopefully, that would resolve any issues we have going forward, and without going into a whole history of where we have been at for the last seventeen years, it's our position that the, the club is in solid financial condition, is not, is able to meet their obligations financially, and for the most part, have done so, and have cleaned up a lot of things off the books. So, Ken does our books. Ken and I are both full-time employees elsewhere, and, and, you know, we do this for the good of the club. So, we would like to think that the club and the city share common goals. I know the city does a lot for us. I certainly feel we do a lot for the city through a lot of events that occur. I think it goes without saying that our golf course is used as a public park. We don't complain about that. We coexist with the, the citizens of Temple Terrace, and, and will continue to do so. But other than that, if anyone has any questions.
I can address.
Oh, go ahead.
So, Ken Balls. Again, I am the assistant treasurer. I'm an appointed board member, not a voted one. I do this on my own time. I volunteer my time. I do not charge the club for anything. So, you know, we have worked a lot over this last year. I, I sent a note to Mr. Schisler as well, and I've, I've talked with Carlos. I mean, the big thing for us, you know, and over the last year, year and a half, is getting caught up to where we were. So we have, just to lay the foundation here, we have caught up all back. Property taxes are paid, so we are current on property taxes. What we committed to you guys before, previously, which the, the payment plan was not approved or agreed to, but we went ahead and did it anyway, just to make sure that we were getting you money. We have, we have paid all of that up through, I just gave a check to Carlos. That was up, that's all paid up through February, so everything that I committed to the city has been done since I started doing this. From the financial statement perspective, we are consistent all the way up through December. I owe Gil January, and we will work in February. Again, why it's not timely is because I am doing it myself. So there is no one at the club that does this. I am doing it in my own spare time. So we are working once, now that the club is on better footing because of the golf, because of golf now. We are getting more consistent revenue in. We will be looking at bringing on a temporary resource or a part-time resource in order to support that and help me out. But what I would say is, to the question, the original question, back to the date, I think it's fine for us to agree on a date. We don't have a problem with that. What was done previously is we, we provided a proposal, and it was declined. So, we were just operating under, hey, we will get you the payments, we can get you the payments. But we don't have any problem at all setting a date, establishing a date each month for us to send the payment to you and drop it off. So now, I will say, depending on when you want that payment, if you do want it to come with the financial statements, it will have to be later, just because they do take more time than, than just calculating the payment, because I can calculate the payment within the first week. Financial statements usually take a skill note, sometimes a little bit longer, because I'm doing, again, on, in my free time.
So what if, that's a good point. So what if you gave the, the payment date included the, the financial statements from the previous month? So they would be for different months?
Yeah.
But then we'd still get one?
Yeah.
It makes sense that the financial statement might lag. It's easier, quicker to figure out the-
Yeah, because it's all based on revenue. What we, the percentage we pay you is based upon revenue, golf revenue. So we, I can do that within the first week, once we run, once we run the initial invoicing and the books, but getting through the balance sheet and everything else takes a little bit longer.
Okay. So would that work for you to have the payment? Like, let's just say you picked the fifteenth or whatever day you picked. The fifteenth would be the payment for the previous month, and then the financial statement for the month before that?
Yep, that's fine.
Would that work?
Yeah, that's no problem at all.
Would that work for you?
That works.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to say for the record that what you've done with the financials is phenomenal. The balance sheet made no sense forever and ever. You've cleaned it up. It is now a document that you can trust. You can, you know, it, it's, it's clean, okay? You've done a great job with that, and I appreciate the, the financials through December. It's been a big help. The only issue, you know, is trying to make some projections and forecasting and so forth. Without January and February, it makes it a little, little tricky for, for the cyclical nature of, of the business itself. So whenever you can get that, that'd be, whenever you get January, that'd be a big help. But no, I just want everybody to know that the financials are a lot cleaner than they ever have been, in, in my relationship with it over the last six, eight years.
Council members? Is this? So what, oh, I did have one other question. So, the, I know in your proposed plan, it was based on revenue, gross revenue, and it was five percent until December, and then it went to, escalated to seven percent. Is it, your intent that it's seven percent?
Yeah.
From, from December on?
Yeah, the reason we originally did the five percent was because we had the back taxes that we were catching up. So we caught all that, all that up, and now in January, it switched to seven percent. So the last two payments have been at, at the seven percent. And then the property taxes, just for the current year.
Okay. So, considering the fact that you're volunteering your time, which we already knew, but, but what's a good date for you? I mean, I, we're, our, our issue is really not, we need it within ten days, is the issue is we need to know when it's going to come.
Yeah. Yeah, if we do, if it's the fifteenth, that's fine, and if it's the fifteenth for the financials from the month, one month prior, then that, that date is fine. And again, once we, once we bring on a temporary resource, we could, we could revisit that schedule as well to see if it can be quicker.
Fifteenth's fine with us, but you picked a date.
Yeah, the fifteenth's fine. No problem.
Mr. Bia?
And it's based upon what revenue figure?
Golf revenue.
Well, just golf now revenue, or?
No, all golf.
All golf, all golf.
Dues, all, all dues, outside play, all internal cart fees, anything related to golf outside of, like, the pro shop or the restaurant.
Everything, but, everything, but the, but food and beverage and golf shop.
Every, yes, correct. That's correct.
All right, okay.
Well, that was ninety percent of what we wanted to talk about. It's already been resolved. So, I did have one other suggestion, and this is for my colleagues on council, but I'd certainly like to get your take on this, too. I would like to, and I've got to talk to our attorney, our legal staff about it, too, but I'd like to take this current agreement that we have, that is like War and Peace, actually, it's probably longer than War and Peace, and go through this and create a, a single document instead of having, you know, twenty years' worth of revisions and addendums and, not, my, my idea here is not to change substantially the agreement, or, you know, we're going to make it tougher. I don't want to-
But it needs to, it needs to reflect-
It just needs to be cleaned up. I mean, if you ask a simple question now, who's responsible for a broken spigot? And it's a, it's a, literally, it's a day of legal research to read, because you've got to go back to read the original agreement, and then you've got to read every revision since to see if it, that part has been amended. It's just, I, I don't know that you or I either one have a good idea of what, without doing a day's worth of reading, what each of us is-
I think honestly, that the records related to the club and the city, I think all of them are like that. I think it'd be, be good for us to go through all of it. Because I've asked simple questions, too, and responses are, they take weeks because you've got to rebuild everything, so.
We would obviously coordinate with you. I mean, we wouldn't like, here's our finished product, sign it. I mean, we would like, is this your understanding of it? Just to reflect reality, too, what, I mean, we've made a lot of handshake deals over the years, and we've, you know, to make things work, both of us have, have, I'd just like to have something that a mere mortal can pick up and understand without-
Keep it simple.
But, Mr. Schaefer, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes?
When we're doing this, though, I'd like to be able to forecast into the future what that's, you could potentially start paying too much if it got really, you know, I mean, if, we need to make sure that what the percentages will pay what you need to pay without hurting everybody.
Well, that's one of the reasons we based it on a percentage of revenue. So it will fluctuate throughout the year. During our high months, like, like what we just paid today is higher than what would have been, what was, what was arranged previously.
Sure.
So we paid twelve, twelve and a half, and usually it was 10,000, right? So, but then there are months in the summer, as you know, that, and the club slows down when the heat, when the heat comes. And so, we, we do see a decline there.
And you get the rainy season, everything.
Yeah, but that's why I tried to do it as a percentage versus a fixed amount, so that way we don't have the risk of, hey, we don't, we can't do it because we're just not bringing enough income.
Well, just so we're on the same page, we have basically three payments that get, that get made. You've got, we've got taxes, and we've got water bill and utilities, and then the, the payments on the, on the loan. That's about 10,003 a month, okay?
That's what it historically was.
Well, that's what it is.
Ten-three was the debt piece.
Correct.
Property tax is, is averages about $2,300 a month. And then the utilities range anywhere from three to five, depending upon.
Well, it wouldn't take an awful lot for that to go over the, the 15,000 a month to, to keep everybody equal. So, I just want to be, I think you and I could, maybe could work out a projection, as this is what we think's going to happen, so that everybody on both sides is comfortable with that number, okay? The seven, eight percent or nine, whatever it needs to be to make it flow, so that we, at the end of the year, we paid 125,000 on the loan, go back to the original loan amount, property taxes are current, and the utilities are current, okay?
Yeah, we'll be putting our budget together for our annual meeting, so that'll have the forecast out. But to your point, now that we've got a full year of golf now, we're able to kind of forecast out the seasonality of some of that revenue as well, so.
That would be good. That'd be helpful. Then I, we can plan, plan the, the, the payment better, because I don't want it to go up past 2043, because that's what, you know, that's, that's when the note from the city, tech, oh, sorry, note from the club gets paid off to the city, that comes out 2043 sometime during the year.
Historical, what, what historical projection of the debt?
Right.
Yeah. Like the city has done-
What was the, pardon?
The city has done paying the debt this year.
Oh, yeah.
And then our, our payments go out until 2043.
Right, because we, it was, it was half of what it, what, what our debt service was. And this takes care of that. We don't go above 2043, and you don't have to pay it ahead of time either.
Yeah.
Because that was our original agreement.
We can project that out, just see how it looks.
Mr. Bia?
So, mayor, members of council, and I appreciate everybody being here to address this, and I think we're making good strides here. Just one thing, I just, just really for the public, for everybody to understand, is, so the, the debt is, was, there's an, an agreement done years ago to make the debt, basically in lieu of paying rent, there's a, a debt payment being made. So when the debt payment is sunsetted back, whether it's 2043 or earlier, if they're doing great and they want to, you know, get ahead of that, the councils, a council in the future, or we put this in this new agreement, is to make clear that there should be rent that will take place of that debt. That's what I would assume. I think any, any manager probably want to recommend that, I would imagine, going forward.
And what kind of dollars are you thinking?
I don't have, we're, we're talking about years from now, so I don't even have a-
About that, is this, if that, if we do go down that, that consideration of rent, then you need to discuss how property taxes are handled, because property taxes would be owed by the city then and not by us. So we would have to figure that piece out, so.
Uh, no, that's not the case. No, no. It's statute-
Well, from a rent perspective, usually when you have a rental agreement-
Sure, I understand.
Includes the property tax.
Yeah, yeah, like, like, yeah, like, yeah, you're coming, common chart, yes, I get that part. What I'm, I'm only, we don't negotiate it here, we're not going to be negotiating this. I'm just saying, not to lose sight of that, that the, the debt is one piece, but that once the debt goes away, it's not, there needs to be a financial obligation still there for the city and the club going forward.
But is that related to the property itself? Because again, if, once you pay the debt on the building, the building is owned by the club, right? So technically, what would we be renting?
The entire property, 800 acres of land from the city.
Right, so it's, so it's more of a property, a property rental, property lease. Now, to your point, that would, we would have to revisit the entire agreement, because I think the current agreement has the property lease at, at a dollar. I think it's a dollar per year, so we'd have to revisit that.
Yeah, I think when we're looking at changing this agreement, clarifying that, we want to make sure we cover that.
It's eighteen years from now.
Yeah, it's a long time.
We'll make it note.
Yeah, I know. I just don't want us to lose sight of it and think that there's nothing that happens after 2043, that's all.
What happened prior to the loans?
Pardon? I think it was like five percent revenues.
Was it?
Yeah, way back when, way back when.
Councilmember Cravitz?
Just so everyone's aware, for commercial lease agreements, there's something called triple net. So it is very common for the tenant to pay property tax, especially when it comes to commercial rent, which is, this would be that.
For, for tangible property, yes?
It would be a triple net agreement. I would assume that would be the typical term for something like this, because it's a, it's a structure, it's an operating concern, and it's also property. It'd be very unusual for the landlord to pay the-
That's why I was asking whether or not if the rent is for the facility itself, for the, the actual property.
In either case. The only time that a landlord typically will cover the property taxes is in a residential rental.
Well, it's also if they own the building. So again, we own the building, we pay the property tax against the building, the asset of the building itself, yes, but if the rent is for the property itself, the actual physical property, it's, it's just, it's different.
I'm not sure I follow. What's your point? Can you explain that?
I'm not sure what your point is, to be honest with you.
The only time that a landlord will typically pay for the property tax is for a residential lease. So if you are a, a consumer who is renting space for habitation, then it's common for the landlord to pay the property tax. In almost every other situation, the property tax is imposed upon the tenant.
That's, but not, that's through, that's through fees, though, not directly to-
No, it is direct.
I've never seen that.
Triple net, it's very common.
No, I understand, I know what triple net is, but what I'm saying is, again, we own the building itself, so by the time, when the, first of all, it's eighteen years, but when the debt is done, the club owns the building, so the club will pay the property tax against that, against that piece of it. But when it comes to the property tax associated with the land, it gets, becomes a negotiation on how we want to deal with that.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that was my whole point.
But again, this is an issue for people who are currently 10 years old, so we don't really need to, to figure out what's going to happen in 2043.
Oh, I thought you were talking about working it into the current agreement.
No.
Oh, okay.
More discussion.
That's what I was concerned with.
No, 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 no. No, we're, we're, we will have internal discussions about your proposal that you made a year or so to go to change the payment structure, about whether we want to, at this point, when we're going to, if we're going to change the agreement maybe, but we haven't discussed that. But we'll discuss that. Truthfully, your, your payments on your formula have equaled, really, pretty close to the quarterly payments. So, I mean, it's been about the same amount of money.
Correct.
So, but we haven't had a chance to talk-
Yeah, it just fluctuates with the seasonality. That was, that was the whole premise of it.
Right, but annually-
It's not much harder for us to make the payments than-
But annually, though, it's turned out to be about the same amount.
Actually, in going forward, it most likely will be a little bit more than, than what was previously done.
Yeah, you know, you seem to be trending in the right direction, so, okay. Counsel?
While we're talking about looking at agreements and streamlining them, I'd like to try to streamline or look at clarifying the tri-party agreement about the tunnels. You know, we have an agreement between the city, the county, and the club on tunnels, and you have to really dig around again on who's responsible for lights, cameras, cleaning, maintenance, fences, and all that. It just, it's in there, but it's hard to figure out, so we could do that. And also to make clear the, who's responsible for the retention ponds, because we get a lot of complaints from our citizens, like the pond on number three tee box, that's the county. The county has the pond behind number eight green, and the city has the two ponds on the seven green and a tee box. Club has no responsibility of retention ponds. I'm sure you guys get complaints, too, especially on the one on number three. But if we could just put that, not in an agreement, but just get it out there so we, we know and our, everybody knows that.
That's a good point. I see Mr. Bia making notes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
I got one more question.
Okay.
Councilmember Cravitz? First of all, you got a little contentious there.
Oh, I'm fine.
Everyone wants to see the club succeed, just to be quick.
Oh, I'm good.
You know, we're, we're 100% because you owe us a lot of money, and so everyone wants you to succeed, 100%. So just, just so that's clear, I, I'm very happy to hear that you're making progress. I just wanted to ask if you have an inventory of assets of some kind? Do you have like a schedule where it has all, you do have that?
Yes.
And are they encumbered toward other creditors at this time?
Um, the only ones are the leased equipment, so against, against the leasing, so that would be for physical equipment with the grounds.
None of the other stuff that you own is, is, you know, given for, for pledge to anyone else?
Nope. We don't have any other debt outside of the debt associated with, with, with the city. The only other thing is an agreement with a small business, SBA loan, which is, again, being, we're working through that process as well, for goodness there.
All right, great.
Councilmember?
I would like to see, or part of the, this, we have to still discuss this again before we come, come up to you guys. One of the things I'd like to float out there is the elimination of the SAC, the Strategic Advisory Committee, became very cumbersome with trying to meet with you guys, and you were meeting with the mayor and, and city manager, which is fine, no problem with that. But we didn't want to make, we'd make sure the left hand knew what the right hand was doing. I would like to propose to council and to, to the club, instead of imposing a SAC committee on you, I would like to see if we can't get a seat at the, on the finance committee. It would, it would help in communication, and it would help in, in just forecasting, make sure we're on the same page, because I mean, we're, we're tied together for the next 20-some years, and we want to make sure that everything works fine. Like I said, the financials look great now, so it's, it's very easy to work with. But I would like to propose that, to eliminate the SAC and put a member of council on the finance committee, if that, if that works, and it's-
Yeah, as long as you could, where are we, March 4th? By the end of them, at the very latest, by the end of this month, if you could just notify us if that's the intention, because that's a bylaw change.
Understood.
And we're already, we're, we're doing bylaw changes, so obviously, we have to provide notice to the membership prior to the annual meeting, and rather not have to, it's not going to be me, because I'm done, but somebody else is going to have to, you know, then do a special meeting, unless you guys are willing to wait another year. I mean, obviously, I know several of, of the councilor members and are certainly welcome to join committees, but I think you're thinking about the next 27 years, when none of us are, you guys are sitting there, none of us are standing here, so.
Yeah, I'm not going to be here.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's the only thing I would request, if-
I, I think, I think it would, it would, communications would be, would be greatly improved.
Yes, sir.
The SAC was supposed to do that, and it did for a while, and then it didn't, then it, you know, it became, with, with the changes in the administration and in the club, it became difficult. But this way, it would be fluid, the communication would be there both ways, okay? Because I'm sure there's things that you would like to hear from us that, that weren't being communicated. Doesn't necessarily need to be on the board, but just at least the finance committee. I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Understood.
So, I don't know what that looks like on your end. On our end, it would require council action, which we can't take in a workshop. We'd have to discuss it, and we could do it tonight under new business if you want, but I don't know what that, mechanics of that are, are on your end. I mean, I wouldn't want to wait a year and a half to, I mean-
Are you referencing, like, a council member beyond that finance committee, or is it, or someone appointed? You know, you're just a-
A council member or, or an appointee.
Or duly, duly appointed, okay, you just-
You created an appointed decision.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's all right. I'm just saying for us to, you know-
How we structure it.
It would, it would be, you know, more efficient to just go ahead and do that right now. now.
But you would have to have a bylaw change.
Right, but we are doing bylaw changes.
For our next, our next meeting.
For our.
So you would, is it too late for you to add this?
No, sir. No, 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 that's why I was saying I would like to have that info or converse, you know, like what you guys want by the end of this month.
Okay.
We, we, our, our intention is to do April fifteenth. We need ten days' notice.
Okay, so we can, we can discuss this at our council meeting. You don't have to wait. We'll call you and let you know what we, you know, if the council in, in the meeting votes to do that, as long as it passes on your side, we would eliminate the SAC if council votes to do that. And then the council would appoint somebody to, to be, not to run the club, I mean, just to.
So.
Be part of the, yeah, yeah. Councilmember Fernandez?
Well, I just wanted to say, I, I do actually have an issue with that, because I don't think that a government, a government body, governmental body should have a say in a private entity that way. Now, it's one thing if it happens to be a club member who is able to serve on that committee, but I just, I don't, I'm not comfortable with our council just appointing somebody to sit on the committee of a private entity.
Is that a voting position?
Well, 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 no, no, I was just gonna mention after she finished that all of our committees, and by the way, we can create any committee, but all of our committees make a rep to the board. The board votes, okay? So, so the finance committee can recommend something, and the board says no. Just like we'd go to the annual meeting with our bylaw changes, and the, the voting members say no. But, so it's not, it's, it's more of, I would say, as you guys are working here today, you can't make any decisions during this workshop. Same thing with our finance committee or anything. They, they come up with a position and a recommendation to bring to the board.
Does, does that allay your concerns, or are you still?
Not really. It set, to me, it sets a precedent that this body could then, any private company, this body could at some point ask to be part of their, I, I don't want to say their operations, but certainly their internal management knowledge. I think it's much better if we just had them actually stand in front of us every month with the financial report. That's at least, we're not, we're not in a position where we're giving the appearance of the government having any say in their operations.
Mr. Schoen, any input? There's a roomful of attorneys here, so.
This isn't just any, this just isn't any private business. One, we own a good portion of, of what they're running their business on. We also have a huge loan outstanding with them. And if you look through all these documents that are like War and Peace, we are already very much involved, and we have the right to see a great deal of their financial information that we haven't been seeing, but we could if we wanted to already. Because each time throughout the years that there have been issues arising, there have been, there's been a new agreement that gives the city more and more, I'm not gonna say authority, but more and more rights to be involved with their business. Because it was the only way we felt that we could guarantee continued success and continued payment off, payment of that loan. So we're, we're already involved on paper. We're just, we just haven't actively been doing everything that we could.
Again, we could, we could also structure the position, you know, as, as a, or a observing position versus making any comments or.
I mean, and if it's a non-voting position, then it, it, you know, I, I do not particularly care for the idea of a council member doing this. It seems to me that there's some conflict of interest already, because everybody but Mr. Kravitz is a member of this club. But, you know, we, we get by that, and you announce that publicly, but I, I don't want it to look like any member of this council is speaking at any of these meetings on behalf of the rest of the council. So it would be better if it were, say, the city manager or a member of our finance department who really understands the financials.
Well, that was kind of my thought too, is, you know, we're fortunate right now, we have two accountants on the council, but that's gonna change. I mean, that, you know, that was kind of what I was thinking. It might even be a member of the community, if they're not a club member, but they're an accountant or an auditor or whatever, or somebody from finance or, and again, I don't think the intent here, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we don't want to be voting on issues that are, you know, interfering.
It's the elimination of a, you have an extra meeting when you accomplish it with one meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, but it just would be, it seems to me like it'd be beneficial for somebody, even a staff member, to say, yeah, I go to the meetings that are transparent, these numbers are solid, and, you know.
I've, I've attended a finance committee meeting in the past, and the information that comes out is, is there, and it, and it's, there's no smoke, no mirrors, it's, it's what's happening, what's going on, and it'd be good information for council to know if there's, if there's a problem.
Might save you guys some headaches too, because if there was a question, we can say, hey, Jim, next time you go, ask them this.
I mean, I think the other, I mean, alternative to a meeting is that with the financial statements, we could provide what's an MDNA, it's like a management discussion or analysis statement as well, which would be, which would give you commentary as far as the results as well.
Well, we'll, we will, before you jump into a bunch of work, we'll discuss it under New Business tonight. We have a fairly light agenda, so it's a good night to do that. If, if the council at that meeting votes to explore this with you, then, Mr. B., would you let them know so they, and then, you know, both sides have to be willing, want to do this. So if we want to do it, then we'll ask your members if they want to do it, if they're willing to do it, and, and if so, then we'll do that and eliminate the SAC committee, and we'll make that all part of the same. The SAC committee was very, I'm sorry, SAC committee was very useful when integrity left you high and dry, and you were struggling for strategies to increase revenue. I think you guys have kind of turned a corner on that already. I'm not sure what we could suggest to you that you don't already know, or not already doing really, so. Councilmember Kravitz, did you have?
So, small comment on that. If we post someone to the club, we'll know what's going on there. And I think it might expose us to some risk as well, because there can always be the assertion that we should have known, or we should have asked the question. In general, I think it's a better approach to have the person who owes the money make all the disclosures that we need to have, and put that work onto them, rather than necessarily, just a thought, because if we have someone who's on that committee not asking the right questions, not getting the right information, we can always be accused of dereliction of some kind if we don't, if we don't pose the question in the right way. And then if a surprise comes up, we could always be accused of not having had the right person or had the right question.
Well, and, and also, I think, you know, this is really immaterial if, if the loan is, is being satisfied in accordance with the agreement, right? You don't care, I would think. So I, I would think that, you know, come, you know, beginning in May, this is not gonna be an issue, so.
Well, we'll have.
We're willing to do whatever.
These are good points, and I think there's gonna be a pretty robust discussion when we bring it up under New Business, decide what we want to do. I see, I, I do see some legitimacy to what you're saying here. So we'll, we'll hash that out under New, you're welcome to stay if you want, but.
We have our board meeting at six, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Got them all out, so we gotta, gotta do it.
Well, I, so, we've accomplished everything that I, I mean, I was just hopeful to establish a date and get on the same page, and we've done that.
Okay. That's what we've established, right? Fifteenth, and, and the fifteenth will also provide the prior month's financials.
So we invited you here to talk about that, but you're here. So, I mean, is there anything, I mean, I know we talk all the time, but is there anything that you'd like to share with us that we didn't bring up?
You have anything? I mean, I think the big thing is, obviously, with the last meeting, and then of course there's an article that's out, just the reputation of the relationship between the city and the club, I think we, it would be good to figure out how we make that more positive than negative, which is out there right now. So it could, something to think about.
Well, this will do it, I think. I, I mean, I, I really think that, you know, having the financial, we're consistent, we're steady, we're, you know, we're paid up, we're, that would do it. I think, I think if you took that piece out, when it comes to everything else, we've come to pretty much consensus on everything. I mean, we, we, the course conditions look good. You know, we know that the trees continue to be an issue. We've helped you in the past. We do recognize that the trees are in the interest of the city, the whole city, and regardless of what the, that's kind of where I point to the agreement. I know that, you know, if you read the agreement literally, you're responsible for all the trees on what is a hundred and forty acres or whatever it is. And I, you know, in today's world, I know that's not probably realistic. And so we have helped with the, the trees in the past, and, and I'm not sure that we shouldn't maybe revisit our position on that, maybe change that a little bit.
That goes back to similar to the tunnel, just clarifying.
And I, and I, you know, you made a statement at the beginning, you know, this is, you know, there's give and take on both sides, and I agree with that. I mean, I, I'm quick to recognize that the club does get trespassed on by non-golfers, that's probably not the right word, but it does get utilized by people that are not using it for its intended purpose, and that you guys, you know, turn a blind eye to that. And, and so I think we all recognize that. We recognize that there's a lot more public availability to your facilities now than there used to be, which changes things a little bit too. So, I mean, I, I agree with you when you make the statement that there's a give and take. And, and I'm not trying to paint the idea that I think, you know, the city's doing all the given, and you're doing all the taking. I know you do some given too, and, and so I appreciate that. It's just hard, and I've said this to Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Disha many times, it's, it's difficult for us to go out in the community and hear from people that say, I don't want my tax dollars holding up a private club. And then to have to go into all, they try to explain, well, you know, it is and it isn't, you know, it's just not, that's not a good position for us to be in. And I don't know that you hear from those people as much as we do. I don't think they're as likely to come to the club and start complaining. You know, I, I think we hear that more than you do.
Yeah, we don't hear it at all, because.
Well, we do. Well, I do. I don't know about the rest.
You know, most of them are members, so they're not gonna.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, that's not, I don't want to paint, like, overstate it like it's wildfire or something like, it's not, but I do hear that.
Totally understand.
About the others, but I, I understand that our relationship is deep and interconnected and complex, and we share common goals. I always think that, you know, the three biggest institutions in this community are the city, Florida College, and the country club. I mean, those are the big ones. You know, the other businesses kind of come and go, but those three are like part of the city. They're institutions. So, any of your other folks are welcome to speak?
I got something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Schaefer?